My name is Amy Quinn. I'm the deputy mayor in Asbury Park. I was elected to the city council in 2013. I've been in Asbury Park for about 20 years. I came in the early 2000s. One of the reasons I came to Asbury was at that time you could kind of pick up a small place for not a tremendous amount of money. And there was a big gay community here that I wanted to be a part of. So I left Jersey City, where I was working for Child Protective Services, and moved to Asbury Park. I was going to law school at night and became involved. The first commission I became involved in was the Environment and Shade Tree Commission. The chair of that is a man named Tom Pavinski, who, once you meet Tom, you don't just do one thing, you do tons of things for the community. So he was a wonderful person for me to come in contact with so early on when I moved here. What we don't want to see is an Asbury Park where we had tumble leaves kind of going down Ocean Ave and Cookman Ave. And we want to ensure that the small business community in Asbury Park stays alive, both the retail and the restaurants and the arts. And some of the things we currently did was close down the streets so retail could put their racks outside, our bookstore could put their books outside, and our restaurants could put their tables outside. And we also waived all of the cafe fees for any of this, both throughout the entire town. So if you were on Main Street, or the waterfront, or downtown, we waived all of the cafe fees. You know, I think we're all worried about the business community in Asbury Park. I think it's, you know, one of the backbones here. Making sure that our business community is up to speed on the grants that have been coming down the pike. So for example, Freeholder Director Tommy Arnone came to our business committee meeting to talk about the $10,000 grant that the county was doing. We've had state representatives talking about the grants that are coming down from the state. And even from a health perspective, we were one of the first towns to get asymptomatic testing for free. So, you know, you didn't have to be an Asbury resident. So if employees were not feeling well, they could go get tested and ensure that, you know, they were well and that they were not, you know, going to infect anybody else. So all of the things that we've done, I think we're going to try to continue to do. We're going to continue the closing of the streets. We also provided businesses with some, you know, canopy restrictions and requirements, heating restriction and requirements. And what I think got lost a little bit during this pandemic from the state is the fact that when you're a shore town, you have a small window to maximize the amount of money you're going to make because in December, January, February, March, you know, you're not packed. So Memorial to Labor Day was the period of time that we really needed to maximize the amount of people coming to Asbury safely and visiting our restaurants. And to that point, we actually challenged the governor on indoor dining and providing guidelines. And it was never about immediately putting people indoors or doing anything unsafe. It was really about motivating him to provide our businesses with some way to know what's kind of coming down the pike. So if they needed to buy partitions, if they needed to bring on more staff, if they needed, you know, whatever they needed to do to do indoor dining safely, that was where we were coming from with challenging the governor. So I think we're going to continue to do all of these things that we're doing. I think we're always open to ideas if our business community or residents have other things that they think we should be doing more of. But it's really, really important that we keep the small business community alive in Asbury Park. We've done a lot of, I think, innovative things in terms of transportation. And I have to give credit to Mike Manzella, who is our deputy city manager, but is also was the director of transportation. So we have put bike lanes throughout the city with the road diet on Main Street, which is going to slow the traffic down on Main Street. We've put a bike lanes throughout Main Street. The road diet should be done in the spring of 2021. Third Ave and Fourth Ave now have bike lanes, Ocean Ave. So I think we're going to continue with bike lanes. We're absolutely going to bring the Bike Share program back. I think we're looking forward to bringing the scooter program back. We've put speed bumps on Third and Fourth. And we're now looking at doing a roundabout on Third and Fourth to continue the kind of traffic calming measures to stop the speeding. Couple of things the city's doing to work on improving the relationship with citizens and the police. And there's three things that we've started and then some other things that are kind of coming down the pike. But some of the things that we started was the Police Athletic League, where the police officers interact with youth and, you know, coach teams and hopefully start, you know, really working on those relationships. The second thing that the city of Asbury Park and is the only place in Monmouth County that is participating in is a state program on crisis intervention training, meaning in certain situations, there'll be specific crisis intervention police officers that are, you know, brought out to kind of talk down a situation. And the third thing that we've done is developed an equity committee that is, we appointed last, when, we appointed last night. And that's really going to look at police reform. We're going to evaluate police policies and make recommendations on how, you know, those policies could be better for residents in our community. I think we're going to, you know, increase our community policing. One of the things that, you know, when we were elected in 2013, and certainly we want to keep moving in 2020, was community policing. Police officers not in cars, but outside of cars and, you know, really getting to know the community. We also, all of our cops wear body cams, which I think, you know, helps with transparency and seeing what's happened at certain incidences. And we got rid of our street crimes unit, which was a unit that's been turned into a quality of life unit. So those are kind of some of the things that we've worked on to hopefully mend some of the relationships in the community with the police department. And again, you know, similar to before, we're always open to suggestions for other ideas on, you know, ways that the police department and community can work together. And I want to be really crystal clear that the police department welcomes that kind of input.
Hi, my name is Yvonne Clayton, and I'm currently running for reelection to the Asbury Park City Council. I am almost a lifetime resident of Asbury Park in that I grew up here. I'm a graduate of Asbury Park High School. I also went to Bond Street School and Bangs Avenue. And I love this city. I left for a while after college, but my parents lived here and I always came back home, summers, weekends. So this is continuing to be my home. In 2011, I moved back full-time. And when I moved back, I realized that there was an opportunity for me to possibly make some changes in my city. And that's why I ran for office for the first, for the first time in 2014. This year is like none other than we've ever experienced. And I think the only reason that we have survived as well as we have is because we have continued to communicate with both our residents and the business community. It's important that we continue to use our business committee because they're a funnel to the council of the needs of many of the businesses in town, not all. So, but we're open to recommendations, we're open to suggestions, and we've done what we can to support the business community. We canceled cafe fees. We've opened the streets for restaurants and businesses who can put their merchandise on the sidewalk. We have had an opportunity to cancel going forward for the Thanksgiving through Christmas holiday parking fees on Saturdays so that people will come to town and shop our businesses. And we will also not have any fees in the parking garage on Bangs Avenue. But it, more than that, we are working with the state, the federal government, any resources that we're aware of, we are bringing to our community. And we're saying, this is where you can get a loan, this is where the grants are. And we're collaborating. For an example, we're concerned about the closing of the showroom. This is such a viable, a vital piece of our community. So we're working with other partners who may be able to come in, rent the space, use the space, so that that showroom doesn't leave this community. We've been very fortunate in that we have a collaboration between New Jersey Health Initiatives and Easy Ride. They are providing free transportation to our residents using Lyft and Uber. The services are available Monday to Friday, 8 to 5, and it'll take residents shopping, to doctor's appointments, and anywhere within the 15-mile radius of Asbury Park. In addition to that, our seniors through the senior center have the ability to use the senior bus. They can make reservations to go to Walmart, ShopRite, the Dollar Store. And we continue to make those kinds of resources available to our residents. As a member of the city council, this has been a concern for us and the administration. What do we do to bridge the gap? And to that end, we have started out with something called an equity committee. This is not meant to be the end-all and be-all, this is just a starting point. The Equity Committee brings diverse members of the community together with city administration and the police department. They are only charged with coming up with a focus for community policing, and the committee has a finite date. It's 120 days. At the end of that 120 days, they are charged with coming back to both the city council and the public at large with a report. That report will say, these are the recommendations we've come up with that we think will enhance community policing in this city. I think it's a start. I don't believe that this is going to solve all our issues, but it's a starting point. And from that, we're hoping to move on to other solutions that are going to enhance the relationship between the community and the police force that is here to serve them.
Hi, I'm Aileen Chapman, and I live here in Asbury Park. I lived here since 1974. I live with my husband, Tom, and I've raised my three children here. I've always been an active part of my community. I volunteered for almost any committee there was, whether it's Little League, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, while the kids were growing up, monitor for school and for lunchroom, and whatever there was available to do, I did it. And I routinely attended council meetings, planning board meetings, and ran for election in 2016 along with Yvonne Clayton and Amy Quinn. And we were elected to serve a four-year term in Asbury Park. We are up for reelection. So currently, I am the director of the Bruce Springsteen Archives and Center for American Music at Monmouth University. That's my day job. I also serve on the Wesley Lake Commission. I began the Sunset Lake Commission. I'm on the Recreation Commission, Quality of Life, and the Green Team. I'm also on the board of the Asbury Park Music Foundation, the Asbury Park Historical Society, the Asbury Park Museum, and Asbury Angels. My father was city manager back in the early '70s for about seven years and really instilled in me a love and passion for this city. So here I am and hoping to be reelected. Our businesses are an essential part of the Asbury Park landscape. They give entrepreneurs the opportunity to live their dream. They provide an identity to our city, and they provide jobs for local citizens. Our business people are often also very involved with our community. They serve on committees, they host fundraisers, they do, they make contributions to different organizations. In fact, just recently, Kathy Kelly from Paranormal put together the Asbury Park Dinner Table to make sure that people were fed through this pandemic and restaurants were supported. For many years, Asbury Park's businesses struggled, but for now, we have a vibrant downtown and a lively oceanfront, and we have shops opening along Main Street and in other parts of town. It's been challenging through this pandemic, but we worked with businesses to help them remain open. So we immediately, as soon as this pandemic hit, we immediately knew that we needed to make steps, take steps and set policies and allow businesses to remain open through however many months this pandemic would occur. So we did things like, we met with businesses, we allowed them to take retail and restaurants out into the sidewalks and streets, we closed city streets, we provided pickup locations for food and drop-off locations for supplies, and we waived the cafe license fees for restaurants and really worked with them to make sure that all their needs were met. We're also in constant contact with state and local officials for guidelines, and we talked to other elected officials from other towns to see what's working for them, what's not working for them. And now, as we're moving into colder weather, we've provided restaurants and retail shops with lists of approved tents and heaters. And we're also working on free parking initiatives through Holiday Parking. We've recently distributed a survey to the businesses to help them meet their needs, and we're going to keep changing our policies as long as we need to in order for businesses to remain open until this pandemic is over. I think that one of our most significant initiatives that we've accomplished in the last four years is the $19 million project for redesigning Main Street for both pedestrians, vehicular traffic, and anyone who moves throughout our town. These include drainage options, curb cuts, ADA compliant traffic signals, repaved roads, sidewalk, and everything needed for all people to be able to move around our city. We've worked with the Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition to identify different modes of transportation and pedestrian walkways and really educate us on what's the best way to move people safely throughout our city, including people with disabilities. We've created miles of bike lanes, and we're now creating bike lanes in, protected bike lanes in areas where we have angled parking. And during the summer months, we put a pilot program into place where we were closing specific streets to vehicular traffic in order for people to get out, get into the streets, you know, ride their bikes, play, use skateboards, you know, whatever it is they would like to do without being in the middle of vehicular traffic. Now that our Bike and Scooter Share program are on hold, we have created a partnership with Easy Ride in order to provide free transportation to all of our residents for medical appointments and grocery shopping. And these are initiatives that we're going to be looking for grants to continue even beyond the pandemic. We've installed 20 upgraded traffic lights that are ADA compliant to people with low visibility. We've partnered with the Christopher and Dana Ree Foundation to make sure that all of our areas throughout the city, including our beaches, boardwalks, and businesses, are ADA compliant and available for all. And we look forward to restarting our Bike and Scooter Share program when this is all over. You know, Asbury Park is only a mile by a mile, so it is really maneuverable for everyone, and we want to make sure that everyone has access. Good police and community relations are vital to the health and safety of our community and to any community. Our police officers need to rely on our residents for cooperation, and our residents need to be able to trust our police officers. It's up to us as elected officials to continue to research best practices, policies, and opportunities for strengthening relationships between our residents and our police officers. In our Faulkner form of government, we are legally not permitted to reach out to the police officers, to the chief of police, or actually to any city staff and ask questions or give direction. What we can do is to assess training procedures and make certain that there's participation in them. We review procedures and policies. We review interactions and outcomes. It's our responsibility to set policies that are meaningful and constructive. It's our goal to have stellar relationships between our police and our residents. And, you know, do we relay these goals to our city manager? Absolutely, all the time, because it's the role of the city manager to work with the police to bring our wishes forward. I think we've been successful in shifting the narrow focus of crime prevention to a broader focus of community relationships and health. It's also important for our police officers to interact with our community, and they do that so often. So our police officers go to National Night Out, they go to all the community days, they do trunk or treat, they give away bicycle helmets and bike lights, and they go to schools and interact with the kids, they read books to the kids, they give tours of the police department. And really, they, any opportunity they have to interact, they do. They've started the Coffee with a Cop, which has been very successful. It brings residents and police together to have meaningful conversations. And it's also our responsibility to mitigate risk factors. So we need to make sure that our social services department has all the tools they need to do their job, and that there's a workforce development program in place for locals to actually have jobs, and that there are recreation programs available to the youth of our community. Really, this is one of the most important things that we can do is to make sure that these relationships are solid and strengthened.
Hi, my name is Carrie Margaret Butch. I'm running for city council in Asbury Park. I've been living and working here since the mid-'90s. And the reason why I'm, I have a couple of reasons why I'm running for council this time around. And one of them, the very first one, is COVID. I am not happy about how our current administration dealt with COVID. We came to the current administration right away and said that we have vulnerable populations in Asbury Park. We have older folks, and we have a very heavy minority community. Those are both very, very vulnerable communities for finding out that Black Americans are dying from this disease at twice the rate that others are. And they're also much more susceptible. So because of essential work, because of housing conditions, so we wanted to get in front of this right away. And we asked for a massive call to action. It didn't happen. Our COVID situation in Asbury Park was that we got our first discussion, really major discussion, with AP-TV, and I don't think that happened until June. We had asked for the call to action in the first week in April prior to what we thought would be a good time, which was prior to Easter. We thought, we really thought that there was not enough discussion, not enough protection, not enough was done. We do know that the city council did vote for go ahead and cleaning City Hall for $50,000, but when we asked for masks to distribute to our community, we were told there was no money for masks. So now, the carers money came down. There is money for masks, but they didn't happen until the third week in September. That's not acceptable. We did get testing, our testing didn't happen until July. So we needed to move quicker. I am concerned. Health is our top priority. We needed to be much more on COVID than we were. We needed a much stronger response from our current administration. Second reason why I'm running for council is because I'm concerned that people are getting pushed out of Asbury Park. I hear it consistently. I hear it consistently that our rents are going up. I can't afford to stay here. Two things that just happened to me recently. One is a very close friend of mine in my building had to move. She was, a condo owner was selling her, his place, and they were paying approximately $1,600 a month. The condo flipped, went into somebody else's hands. That same unit is now going for $2,300 a month. That is a $700 a month increase. That is unconscionable. We are going to lose an incredible amount of people if we don't deal with it, and we are going to deal with it by putting in a rent stabilization ordinance that will not allow for more than a 4% increase per year. So we know that our, our community is 79% renters. We know that that would impact people greatly if they, if they had the comfort that they were going to be able to stay. We don't want to lose anybody. We want anybody who's here to be able to stay. The other thing that concerns me is that I just saw a four-bedroom house for sale right off of Springwood for $469,000. It was sold two years ago for $115,000. That is way out of anybody's cost that lives practically in our community, let alone on the southwest, in the southwest section. So we have to be careful about hyper gentrification, and we have to make, do everything we can to pull out all the stops to make sure that if people want to stay in Asbury Park, they get to stay. Because we, I believe in what's good in Asbury Park. And what's good is our diversity, it's our art, it's our culture, it's our history, it's our music. Without, it's our, essentially, it's our people. So I and my running mate, Felicia Simmons, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that you stay and you thrive in Asbury Park. Not enough has been done. We can't just leave it to market forces. As a matter of fact, we didn't leave the redevelopment to market forces, so we don't have to leave this to market forces. The government got involved 20 years ago. They can get involved now. But this time for you, not for a corporate developer. This time for you. So vote for Asbury Matters team, myself and Felicia Simmons, and we will be representing you. Okay? We are in a global pandemic, so we have a new normal. And I think the best thing that the leadership in Asbury Park can do is to keep everybody safe and to be the strongest advocate that they can to get businesses what they need. Right now, there's a second bill that's floating in Congress. This is a second stimulus bill. This one will take much more care of Main Street than the first bill took care of Wall Street. So I think our job as representatives in Asbury Park is to work with our state and local legislators, as well as our congressional team, and make sure that we get what we need for our businesses in Asbury Park.
Great, thank you.
I mean, to go on, I would say, the other part of it is marketing and making sure that we come up with some creative ideas. Asbury has the most creative people on the planet in our city, so for us to do some creative activities... So for us to do some creative activities, like what we've been doing, but curbside pickup, all sorts of interesting stuff. I remember when Asbury Park Main Street and Cookman Avenue was not as busy as it is now. So I remember what we used to do. We used to have, first Saturdays, we used to do an awful lot to attract business. I think we could do the same thing as we are doing. I see a lot of people working really hard, but we gotta do everything we can to market our businesses. Well, we have done some interesting things. I, I, I want to commend Mike Manzella and team for doing the ride share program right now, or for the, doing the ride program where people get free rides to doctors and, and, and to go shopping right now during the pandemic. I think that that was really important. I think that that came out of conversations when people were looking at who lives in Asbury Park. And a lot of our folks are essential workers, and a lot of our people work in Neptune, in the health industry, which is pretty much the front lines. So I think if we could do more to encourage people to get rides, if we could subsidize their rides to work, I think we'd be better off as a community and we'd be better off, period. But as far as, um, the slow ride folks, I love the slow ride folks. I love the complete streets people. They have been doing a great job and, um, reminding us that we have to keep people safe as well as, uh, do everything we can to decongest and make it a livable, walkable, slow ride city. Well, I think we have to listen to the residents that are complaining and the residents that have issues. It's not my son or my daughter that has issues. It is a specific community in Asbury Park that has issues, and I think that we have to listen to them. And I have been listening to them and working with people like Reverend Nicole Harris and Felicia Simmons and Allison Estes, people that do have children that are of color and people that are... I think we were given an opportunity two years ago when, when Reverend Harris told us about her relative who was stopped by a, a police officer and treated a little bit roughly because he didn't have a light on his bike. Okay, she raised the alarm that we have to pay attention to what's happening. And this is not just happening in Asbury Park. It's happening nationally. So we have to listen to our community, and what our community has asked for is a civilian complaint review board. I support the creation of a civilian complaint review board. I also support the listening to people who live here now. It is a, it is unconscionable that since that discussion, since it was raised two years ago, that we've lost two lives in Asbury Park. We've lost one gentleman who had mental health issues and one, another gentleman in a domestic violence situation. That never should happen in the city of Asbury Park. It shouldn't happen anywhere. So we have to now, we need reform and we need systemic change. And I am willing to work with my partner, Felicia Simmons, on council to make that systemic change. We're not afraid of it. We, we talk about race. We understand that race, it, race matters in the, in, in the United States, and it has an impact on how people get treated and how, that's statistically. So we are happy to listen and we're happy to have the dialogue. We're happy to start the reform, but it has to start.
My name is Felicia Simmons. I am a lifelong Asbury Park Monmouth County resident. I currently live in Asbury Park and have for decades. I'm a class of 1998 graduate of Asbury Park High School, and I'm a lover of the city. I'm in, in love with Asbury Park. The business community and, um, here in Asbury Park, um, the community of Asbury Park, it's going to be a bumpy road, but it could be a bright future. But we have to slightly reimagine what, um, our city and our, um, economic hub is going to be. We have to, um, in the age of the pandemic, we have less travel. So we have to really engage more of the city residents to take part in, um, the business side of Asbury Park. We have a lot of tourism, right? We have a lot of people who want to come here. But in this future, we have to make sure that the people who are here are engaged in spending money and, um, falling in love with, um, the city. We just talked about, um, the recent closing of this, uh, wonderful, um, cinema here. So how do we recreate, um, some of the businesses who, um, couldn't come out of the pandemic? We reinvigorate it. We, we take opportunities like, um, the lack of, um, Broadway, and we bring it back here to a city that is made of arts and for the arts and inspired by the arts. So we just have to be creative. Then we also have to reach out to certain economic opportunities that, um, the state and the federal government are, um, are pushing out there to make sure that every opportunity to make sure that our community here is safe and prosperous is taken. Again, um, we have to be, um, creative and reach out. Um, having conversations and bringing, um, more public transportation, uh, mass-wide transportation, um, promoting, um, the bicycle and scooters. We have to reinvent, um, reinvent to make sure that it is, um, pandemic-friendly and sanitary. So we have to make sure that we reach out and have these different, um, shuttles and, and, uh, extra trains and extra, um, bus routes that kind of weave throughout town to make sure that everybody utilizes it in a, um, productive way. Living here, um, being a lifelong resident and having friends that are police officers, but also, um, knowing the deep-seated, um, issues that we have here, the systemic issues that we have here in town, has sparked and helped me engage more with, um, my friends and acquaintances I have in the Attorney General's office. Like bringing in de-escalation programs and bringing in certain, um, um, other entities to come in and kind of help our police force, um, really get engaged and work on their problems. These are, this is a deep-seated issue, and it's not an issue that one thing can solve, right? Of course, having a citizen review board is needed. Um, and Equity Commission, I don't, I'm not really sure what that is. It, but everything that it brings people together is needed. But we have to really go in and start, um, picking apart and digesting, um, the whole story and, and putting together a real plan, um, and with real help from, um, sources to make sure that we have a safe community for everybody in it, that we are a place that everybody's life is valued. Um, and we address these problems that we can't just look over. We have to really engage.
So my name's Robert McEwen. Uh, I am a resident of the city of Asbury Park, and I've been living in Asbury Park since, um, 1993. I moved here. I am an attorney, and I have been practicing law since 1988. And, uh, I, I moved my law practice to Asbury Park in 2004. My, my law practice is in the areas of real estate, real estate development, zoning and planning, transactional law, and municipal law. And so I, I think I bring that experience to the table, in the sense that the, you know, the council would have the benefit of my legal experience. I guess I got ahead of myself. I'm running for a seat on the, the Asbury Park City Council, and that's why I'm here. So, um, I, as I said, my law practice, uh, started in two, well, I brought it here in 2004. And, um, I've been involved in many, many organizations here in the city. I've done charitable work and, and not-for-profit work for over 30 years. Um, I was on many boards of not-for-profit organizations. I worked on the Board of the Center. I was a member of the Board of the Center and the president for four years from between 1999 and 2012. And I, uh, helped Father Bob. We built, uh, Center House, uh, which is an organization that helps, uh, folks in our community that are living with HIV. So that was a very fulfilling experience for me. Uh, in 2014, I took my first job in public service in the public sector. And I, I was hired as the city of Asbury Park's first, uh, Director of Property Improvement and Neighborhood Preservation. And, um, that was probably one of the top three, um, fulfilling experiences in my life. Because I had the opportunity to get out and interact with residents in the city. I got to meet people in their homes, and I helped them through problems that were pretty serious. And I got to really connect with people on a first-hand basis. And when you're practicing law for, at that point, you know, 20 years, 25 years, whatever it was, it's kind of refreshing to do something different and to get out and feel like you're actually helping people. Not that practicing law isn't helping people, but it's a different kind of helping people. Um, I actually got to see the results of my work, uh, by going out and, and, you know, in this job with the city. So, um, I, I left my position with the city in 2020, in June this year. And so now I want to continue my, uh, kind of, I guess, career in public service. And I am hoping that, uh, I'll have your votes because I'd like to, uh, have a seat on the Asbury Park City Council. I, I'd like to take the experience, the knowledge, the experience that I have and bring it to the council, and I think it would benefit the citizens of, uh, the city and, um, in, in, in making policy for the city. So thank you. You know, I think that we have to start thinking, uh, ahead of time. We have to think about what's happening once this pandemic passes. Clearly, you know, there, there are businesses that are hurting right now during the pandemic, and I think that, um, you know, we have to find a way to get them through the crisis. And I think the, the first order of business should be that the city, uh, goes back to, uh, an original idea that, that was kind of, I guess, tabled for a while and have a business and economic, uh, development person, a department in the city that deals just with the businesses in the town and the development of the businesses in the town. And that person or that department would, uh, you know, assist businesses in getting started. And then businesses that maybe are in trouble, they'd assist them as well, provide counseling to them, places to go to get funding or financing. Uh, and, and they could provide all kinds of services. But, um, I think it's, um, the responsibility of the city's government in a city where we have such a, I guess, a, um, kind of a prosperous business community that is really the backbone of our city. It's a, it's a really big chunk of our city and what's, what makes Asbury Park, um, a city. So I think that the government should be supportive by, uh, having someone to assist it and provide services. Now, the person that the city hires can also be a grant writer and, you know, can be multitask and, uh, write grants not only for the, the, the Business Development Department, but also write grants for the other departments in the city. Because I think that's sorely missing right now is, uh, someone that can look into money that's out there for some of these other departments in the city. So kind of be, be kind of a combination, um, department. And, uh, I think that that person would be able to address some of the needs of the business community while we're in this pandemic and hopefully get them through. And then, once we come through it, um, be able to help them come up with better ideas to kind of grow and, and prosper even more. Well, I think that the, the issue of, uh, transportation for disabled and handicapped individuals is a problem even before there's a pandemic. I mean, it's always been an issue in the city, and I think that it's something that we have to focus on, you know, when we get out of this pandemic. I don't, I don't know that there's an answer to the, to the problem for any kind of transportation right now in the downtown area because a lot of the businesses are operating out on the streets. So it just makes everything a little more difficult to have, um, you know, traffic going through the streets. And the other issue is, you know, the retail stores that, uh, have issues with their operations. I mean, some of the restaurants can get their, their, their tables out onto the streets, and that's what the city has worked with, but, um, the retail stores, have not been able to necessarily bring out their, their business operations to the streets. So, um, the issue of transportation, though, getting back to that, the, the problem is something that we need to get ahead of for when this is over and when the streets get back to normal. And I think that, you know, there's money out there. There, there's got to be money out there. I mean, we've got a great transportation director that the city hired, Mike Manzella, who's done phenomenal things for the city since he was hired. He's the gentleman who, who put this whole scooter program into effect and the bicycle program. And, uh, I mean, those are all great ideas. And Mike's the kind of guy who is, uh, he, he has innovative thinking and, and outside-of-the-box thinking and, and really kind of gets ahead of problems. And so we've got a good person already in that job, and I think that, um, that's something that he would probably be able to address, you know, once we get through this. It's important on this issue that, uh, I, I think the first thing on this issue is, is, uh, good governance. And I think that that's why it's, it's a major responsibility for the council to figure out how to address it, uh, in advance. Now, we've been lucky. There haven't been any major issues in this city for a very long time, um, between police and citizens. Even with the, the George Floyd protests in March, as that happened back in June, there was, they were all peaceful protests, and I think the police were very respectful of the, the marchers. Um, I think there was one minor incident on the night of June 1st that happened after a curfew came into effect and, and the people didn't want to get out of the, you know, go home. But other than that, I think that, uh, our police have been very respectful of the, you know, the issue. And I think they recognize that there's an issue with racial disparity in policing. But I think that, you know, the, there are, there are some issues that still need to be addressed. And I think we can be proactive and get out in front of them. I think the council's formation of the Equity Committee in, um, I guess it was September. It was just recently. I mean, that's a little late in coming. Uh, it's honestly something that I've been kind of thinking about for a long time because of what goes on around the country. And so it's not something that we should have been waiting for, you know, because it's an election year, because, you know, something happened, the George Floyd thing happened. We should have been on that, and we, there should have been an Equity Committee five, six years ago, you know? But, um, I guess that's what I'm saying is we need to start thinking in advance of problems happening. And, uh, and that's the kind of thinking or proactive thinking and problem solving I would bring to the table.
Hi, guys. My name's Arthur Schlossback. I am a resident of Asbury Park since, um, I guess, 2010 this time and, uh, back in the 70s. My family came to Asbury Park in 1888. We've been involved in this town since then. My first business when I went to Asbury Park High School as a senior in 1970 was, was a little boutique on Madison Avenue in the Savoy Theater Building, which I'm glad is still there. I've been a, a advocate for small business in New York City, where I lived for, for many, many years, down by the World Trade Center. I had two businesses there on 9/11 in the red zone. I was closed for nine weeks and then for months after that, trying to get people to come back, which gives me a little experience in what's going to happen after this epidemic, goes away or whatever it does. Goes away or whatever it does. It's gonna, people aren't just gonna run back here and go, yay, we're here. They don't do that. They didn't do it in New York and they're not gonna do it here. We're gonna have to pride them. We're gonna have to entice them to come. But I think we can. It's a pretty resilient town. Asbury was a little different when I was a kid. It was more, uh, family friendly. I think we need to go that way a little more. I mean, it's nice now, uh, I've been in hospitality business for thirty years and there's some great restaurants in town. But most of them are very expensive. And there really isn't anything on the, that much on the boardwalk for families. So I think we have to work on that. Also, we have to work on the west side, especially the southwest quarter where they. Put many townhouses and, and, and medium and low income housing projects over there, which is good. But the one thing they forgot to do, which government always forgets to do. Is, well, they usually forget about schools, but we have plenty of schools, is food. There's no place for anybody to get any food over there. It's an eighteen dollar cab ride just from, from. From Springwood Avenue where, um, Kula Cafe is to shop right in back. That, you know, that's just, most of the people on the, on the west side don't own cars. And, uh, I elected, I would definitely, one of my first thing would, would be to get these developers to find some retail space. Well, they have some retail sites. Use a retail space, find a grocery store. We don't need a supermarket. But at least a grocery store like the size of Super X for the people over there. I've been a small businessman since I was in Asbury Park High School in, in nineteen seventy-one. I started my first business. It was called The Den at Eden. It was a little boutique on Madison Avenue. Right in, in the Savoy, uh, Theater Building when it was a theater. Up until today. I've had fourteen of my own businesses. I am a mentor for the Small Business Administration SCORE Program in Monmouth County. Where I've had over a hundred clients in the last, uh, I guess I've been on it now nine years. And that's a, that we talk to people that want to open a small business. We volunteer. Or they have one and it's not doing good. You know, I've worked with, with businesses. I mean, my hospitality is, is my real background and e-commerce. I've, I've had an e-commerce store. That sells American-made specialty foods for twenty years now. Um, so I'm big on retail, big on e-commerce. And, uh, but I've opened up a, a bowling alley for, for people. I've opened up hair salons, gyms. Other than just restaurants and, and, and bakeries and cafes. Uh, and I'm the only one that would be on the board that has that kind of experience. I mean, some of them have had little businesses and they've, they've worked for their family business. Uh, one of them, Eileen, worked as a manager for some, some bars and music clubs forty years ago. And in small business, things change daily, you know, daily, weekly, monthly. Everything changes, especially with this epidemic. I mean, just look at, one of the things they did was on the boardwalk. I got my daughter a job there, so I was finding out every day what was going on. And then when they first reopened, they let three hundred people come on. You could put three hundred people in this building and still have room. And they cost the, the city a lot of money and I kept telling them what they should do and they just didn't listen. I, I walked off the whole thing. It was sixty, six thousand two hundred feet from Ocean Grove, uh, the casino. To, to the fisherman's, uh, parking lot and then anywhere from three hundred to four hundred and fifty from the water line to the boardwalk. That means. If you could have sectioned it off, which I would have done, I would have put little circles just like they do in Central Park. And every ten feet, not six feet, every ten feet. By doing that, you would have eighteen hundred, hundred, eighteen hundred spots available with, with social, uh. You know, being socially connected and. And that was just for one person each one of those spots. If like normal on the beach, two, one person, not very many people go by themselves. It's all using, I'd say probably average of four and a half people, especially with the families. That would have brought you up to having legally and by the EDC's recommendations upwards of six thousand people a day. We never got over three thousand for the whole, any day before that. And from years before. They used to get eight to twelve thousand people on, on, on a weekend. I mean, on, on a Saturday. A couple times fifteen thousand when they had the, um. The, the big music concert, they had sixty thousand. But normally, you know, during the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they have. You know, one to three thousand and then Thursday, Friday and Saturday, anywhere from eight to twelve thousand. And that, and then because the people couldn't get on the beach and the only way you could get a badge was to have an app. How many people on the west side don't have, uh, smartphones and stuff to have an app to buy a, a beach badge? You couldn't get a beach badge. And the guy that ran it, Joe, he did a good job of letting going around the city manager and, and allowing more people on the beach. Cause even when he had three thousand people, it looked like it was like nobody there. And that cost, I figured, minimum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the city. In, in, in non-revenue between that and the parking and maybe as high as a million two. And I think next year they gotta really look at this better because the, the boardwalk and, and the beach is, is us. It's what we are, you know? I know a lot of people don't want people coming, you know, day trippers and coming, but that's what we are. We've been like that for over a hundred years. And we're gonna be like that thousands of years after we are, we're all gone. It's, you know, there's, uh, five thousand, uh, miles of, of, of oceanfront on the east coast and five thousand on the, or six thousand on the west coast. And three hundred and thirty million people in between and they all wanna come to the beach and they're all gonna come to the beach. And if you don't want them here, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have bought your house in a town like Asbury Park. Cause it's a beach town and it is one of the gems of beach towns in this country, if not the world and can be. Well, someone that, that right now is handicapped and, and was handicapped for many, many years. Uh, I understand that, that how hard it is for people to get around that have wheelchairs or crutches. Uh, or. A leg like mine right now. The newer the city, the, the more has been put in for, for handicapped people. The older the city like Asbury Park. The less, even though we've made strides on the beach and places for, it still needs more. I mean, the bicycle and the, and the, and the scooter thing. I mean, they're, they're, they're for the fun things for the family and for people that, that get around town. They're not really for transportation. And I, I don't really realize that why, why now they're not open. I mean, they should be open now. You're not gonna get next to people on, on these things. We could have, do a shuttle program. You know, Asbury is only one point two miles, so I think people would be better off health-wise if they walked. The need, I mean, there's a lot of bicycle people and that's good, but I don't think we have to like start. Uh, you know, a, a bus service from one end of town to the other. Maybe Madison Marquette would run one from the train station to, to, to the boardwalk. Is that. You know, and I start, cause that's. That's where they make their money and need people to come there. Well, you know, being very involved in government after nine eleven in New York City, I was asked to be on the, the New York. Police Department's auxiliary program, which I was on for six years. Then when I moved down here in two thousand ten, one of the first things I did was come to City Hall and ask to talk to the, the Chief of Police. At the time and did, they have an auxiliary program and he told me about the COP program that I had been a member of since the, since, uh, two thousand eleven. Uh, well, we just, we're like a neighborhood watch, but we got, we get trained better and we go out on patrol and, and vehicles. It's a, it's a, I, uh, uh, ear, um. It's a C. Uh, see, you know, see and, and, and tell program where we go around, if we see something, we call it into the regular police and they show up. Uh, but it also, a lot of people like, in the town like the fact that, that citizens are, are, are watching out for themselves. For them and, and we do that. So I, the, the need for, for a community group is, which they said they were starting, but I don't, I, I don't know whatever happened to it. I made an application to be on it. Is good and I'd wanna be on it. I think I can bring a lot to the table. Also, you can have a review board. A review board is totally different than what, what Amy Quinn and, and, and the mayor wanted to do with their, their committee. A review board is when someone does something wrong, you review what it did. Or someone just did something, you review what they did. The one that, that, that I was talking about, that, that, that the city council, that's one before things happen. You get, you get people to talk about it before it happens. So they're two different things and I think we need both of them in town. And, you know, after, this is going back a long way, after, uh, the July fourth incident in nineteen seventy. When I had my little business on Madison. I had the state police come to my parents' house and they dragged me to Trenton to be on the, on the committee. To figure out why and what happened. And I don't really remember what we talked about because I was only like eighteen years old, I think, at the time.